Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me celebrate my 75th birthday with you. This is the highlight of my day. I do appreciate all of you. Let's reflect now on the fact that over, well over 2,000 years ago, when the Jewish scrolls were hidden in caves along the Dead Sea, over 300 promises contained in those scrolls. And in 1947, when we recovered them and authenticated them, all the 300 promises were now documented history. And we thank you for this last meeting before the day we celebrate that great gift we got. We thank you for that, Lord, and we ask you to bless in these proceedings today. Thank you for all these people at this year's end for giving us a good year. I pray that you'll give them the strength for next year and keep this great team together. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order now. And the, this is the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting for December 15, 2021. It's a regular meeting, and this meeting is open. Call to the public is the first item. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Actions taken will result of, or result of, public comment will be limited to direction staff, directing staff to study the matter and reschedule the matter for a future consideration and discussion at a later date. So, do we have anybody that's turned in slips? Do we, if you haven't turned his?
Chairman, no one has turned in slips, but it appears that we do have public here that would like to speak during calls to public.
Yeah, please. Please, Nancy. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Nancy Smith. I'm a City Council member for the city of Maricopa. And I'm here to talk about your topic number 13, the Pinal County redistricting, and just to encourage you to take it very seriously. There are communities within your districts that take it seriously, the city of Maricopa being one. A couple elements that I'd like you to look at. Definitely, I looked at the presentation based on the numbers. There surely are a couple of the districts that have numbers that need to change in order to get the right balance amongst districts. And then I also would like you to consider what the IRC is, the Independent Redistricting Committee, is looking at in terms of communities of common interest. And I think that's very important. I think as a supervisor, when you get conflicting interests within your district, it's very hard to actually support those. And I think looking at communities of common interest, such as the legislative and congressional districts, for the IRC are looking at, I think is very, very important. A minor thing to look at and consider as well is the size of the district from point to point. I know District 4 very personally, and it's about 115 miles from one point to the next point. And if there's a way to balance that out, I think that'd be important as well. I would probably also, well, not probably, definitely want to see feedback opportunities from the community as you begin to outline the maps and provide public input to those. I think that's very serious and very important as well. So, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. If you would, your name and at least the general location of your residency and?
My name is Greg Mahoney, and my general location is Oracle, Arizona.
Thank you.
And I'm here to remind the Board of Supervisors of the August 25, 2021, meeting. There was a consent item BB involving Daniel Allen Dickinson, and there still has been no change in this illegal trailer occupation. And it's been 110 days since the Board of Supervisors' approval of enforcement of this violation. Every day and night for 410 days now, crime is being committed in my neighborhood, and we cannot walk on our own property or even open a door or window without hearing an RV camping generator illegally running power to these two occupants, one of which has already admitted to co-compliance many of his multiple violations. The Pinal County Board of Supervisors, you guys on August 25, approved an authorization of a Pinal County attorney, and I quote, "to take all necessary action to enforce the civil hearing office finding of violations against Daniel Allen Dickinson, up to and including filing a complaint in Superior Court, utilizing appropriate resources to remedy the violations, and file liens for the cost of recovery." But the neighbors in this neighborhood have had to suffer this crime for a long time. And is there anything you guys can do to prevent this from happening in the future? And who is responsible for the enforcement, and when will it finally happen?
Well, as I said in the opening of public comment, we can't discuss it at this point, but we can give staff direction to get back to us, and we'll try and get an update on that, and including update you from the department as well.
Who would I contact to know about the update?
That would be Code Com- would it be County Attorney's Office?
Okay.
Okay? So, Chris Keller.
Chris Keller?
Contact Chris Keller at the County Attorney's Office.
The status of the case?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and he probably can, he can probably give you the timeline. I'm not positive, but he'll, he will update you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, I am Tom Bean of Casa Grande. Legislative prayer has been upheld by the United States Supreme Court in numerous cases. I wish to address Pinal County rules for those delivering an invocation at the Board of Supervisors' meetings. The policy of this board is to have a clergy of Pinal County give the invocation. A five-year study of former invocations shows a high presence of the clergy or evangelicals. Nearly all could be called Christian. I call upon the board to be more inclusive. Please seek out clergy and non-clergy that represent a diversity of churches and synagogues and temples. I do hope that you will delete the current chaplain that gives about 80% of the invocations. His invocations have become close to sermonizing to his flock. Yet I still feel that any invocation is divisive and often disturbing to many. May I remind the board that allowing any paid government official to give an invocation at a government meeting does violate what the Supreme Court has ruled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Dave, go ahead. Name and general area of residency?
Yes, my name is Dave Coward from Gold Canyon. And I just would like to address an issue about the COVID issue that's affecting Pinal County. The CDC has released a report that the average number, the good news, the average number of new cases in Pinal fell by 228 yesterday, a 10% decrease for the day. But because of the high spread, the CDC recommends that even vaccinated people wear masks here. Since January of last year, at least one in five people who live in Pinal County have been infected, and at least one in 373 people have died. The latest report, as of yesterday, 288 people, cases were reported in Pinal County. 19 deaths were reported just yesterday. The seven-day average for cases is 228. The average number of deaths per seven days is five. That is a 1.11 per 100,000 trend. If that continues, we in Pinal County can realistic, realistically see about 4,000 fatalities in Pinal County due to COVID, if that 1.11 continues. So, I just caution everybody that, especially with the new variant that's out and is in Arizona, that we should still be masking up. And also, they released some numbers that nationwide, about 800,000 people have died. 500,000 of those people are potentially preventable, because those happened after the vaccination. So, and this is happening on your board's watch. So, this is a public health issue. This is not a ideological freedom versus tyranny issue. This is a public health issue, and people are dying and will die from that. So, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to? Go ahead, Mr. McCain.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Barrett McCain from Arizona City. I've heard this, this board being bullied by somebody that's not taking care of their own personal hygiene. I went to Vietnam through race riot to learn that people do not take care of personal hygiene. They will, in fact, die. Because even when there are bullets flying around, if you're not taking care of your personal hygiene, that's why people, just like people in the NFL using drugs, they're gonna die if they use drugs. It's common sense. And I'm sorry that you keep getting hounded this. It's wrong. I'm 67 because I took care of my health. I know how to take care of my health, and it's not your fault. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. And like the invoker of prayer, I'd like to invoke the fact that recently I celebrated my 89th birthday, only 20 years younger than the state of Arizona, and a believer in our republican form of democracy. And, Mr. Chairman, this is the end of the year. Time for us to reflect on a few things. Sadly, I was here at the beginning of the year, when after I left the board meeting, on my way home, turned on the radio and heard of the violence being perpetrated at the United States Capitol, a place where I worked for 24 years. And so, I'm very concerned about what's happening in our nation. A few minutes before the beginning of the board's meeting, I had an impromptu exchange of ideas with somebody who has very strongly-held ideas that are counter to mine, Sheriff Mark Lamb. And I suggested to him, this is a time not for impromptu discussion here, but let's have a public forum when we can talk about these critical issues that are driving us apart. And I say "driving us apart" because before Sheriff Lamb even launched his election, I met in my own living room with Mark Lamb to talk about his intentions to get into public service. I associate myself with all of you because I'm a strong believer in self-governance. I don't agree with some of the things that are represented by some of you, but I want you to be the best that you can be in public service. And so, today, I'd simply like to applaud you for your public service, but also to reflect on the very, very serious challenges that in my lifetime I've never thought I would be witnessing. And I come from a background where I was subjected to total segregation as a Mexican-American in my home state of Arizona. So, I've seen these personal challenges close up. And so, I'd like to encourage you to continue fighting for a democracy over autocracy. We've had witnesses come before you to spread the big lie about what happened on January 6. I've had an elected official just a few minutes ago deny that that big lie is a reality. So, Mr. Chairman, again, thank you for your service, but please find it in your hearts to schedule in the future a forum where we can have open, honest, truthful, accountable dialogue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Moves us to item number two on the agenda. Presentation of certificates of service for employees for 20, 25 years. Mr. Lou?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
We're privileged to honor several employees today that have been with us for many years. First, we'll honor those that aren't present, and then we'll go through those that are, and if they'd like to come up as well as with their supervisor or director and say a few words, that'd be great. And then at the end, we'll gather together for a large picture with you.
Okay.
So, first, we have Alyssa Romero from the Clerk of the Court's Office. She's been here since 2001, so she's been here for 20 years and is a deputy clerk. And then also, we have Ginger Guyton, who is not present with us, but has been with the county since 2000, so she's been here 20 years and is a Justice Clerk Court there at the Copper Quarter Justice Court. And then we have Cheryl Castro with the Recorder's Office, who is not present, but has been with us since 1996, so for 25 years, and she is currently a Deputy Recording Supervisor. So, thank you to all of them, and congratulations. And we'll go on to those that are present. Next, we have Adriana Carrasco from Juvenile Court Services, who has been with us since 2001, so for 20 years, in a probation officer position. Hi, Adriana.
Do we have a staff member from there or anybody?
Let's see, Denise or a supervisor? No? Adriana, did you want to say any words?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Just don't leave. We have that photo op coming.
Next, we have Sam Cunningham with Public Works, who was hired back in 1994 as a laborer, has been with us 25 years, has had many promotions, and was promoted in 2015 as a highway foreman, and then again is our current safety coordinator for Public Works. Sam here with us?
Sam?
Nope. Andy says he's not here.
Oh.
And we'll stick with Public Works. We have Ray Garcia, who was also hired as a laborer back in 1994, and who also promoted several times, and in 2010 was promoted as a highway foreman and is currently now our Highway Superintendent. And so, it looks like Andy and Ray are here, and if they want to say any words, and if you want to say anything for Sam too, you can. Thanks, Ray.
I just want to say thank you, and it's been an honor to lead and manage the best, hardest-working and most dedicated employees of Pinal County, and that'd be Public Works' maintenance branch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
You hear that a lot from the Public Works folks. They got high self-esteem over there. And then lastly, we have Ina Cook from Superior Court Administration, who started back in 1996 and is currently a Judicial Administrative Assistant. She's been here 25 years.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Dave Tascum, Court Services Program Manager. This is a very unique circumstance. Ms. Cook actually trained me many years ago. So, this is kind of unique. The two things that you will immediately notice about Ms. Cook is, one, her gregarious personality. You'd be hard-pressed to find a more pleasant person to be around. The other is her knowledge and competency at her job. Not only is she one of the most skilled people I've ever had the pleasure to work with, but she makes everyone better that she works with. Thank you, Shelley, for what you've done for this county and for those of us lucky enough to work with you.
Thank you, everybody, and that's, if anyone wants to come up for a group photo with the board?
Come on up. Come back up.
Roadblock here. Keep going. There you go. Over just, there you go. No, you're good. You're good. Even wears bells. Okay, and everybody look over this way, and three, two, one, nice big smile. Let's do another one. Three, two, one. That was a good one.
I'm gonna get a picture with the Cook family.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I just want to mention that Ben Cook has also been here for 25 years and has been an integral part of the Sheriff's Office for a long time. So, between these two, 50 years of service to the county.
Let the county get one. No, no. And three, two, one. Another one. Three, two, one. And one more. Standby. And three, two, lean it just a little bit back there. There you go. There you go. Three, two, five.
Okay. So, what do you next mean? Well, it's always, it's always fun to be able to recognize our valued employees that have, I mean, they've really dedicated their work time to Pinal County. When you get 20, 25 years in there, that's a long time, and we really appreciate it. So, anybody else have anything to add to that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. County Manager's Report, information only. Mr. Lou?
Looks like the Cook family's gonna have some neat Christmas cards to send out this Just that this is our last meeting of this year. We don't meet again until January 5. So, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and see you all next year.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lou?
We can leave now.
Yeah. No, you can't leave yet. All right. Number, item number four on the agenda is the Purchasing Division Report. Presenter Tara Peterson. Is that right? It may be the right name this time.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I am Tara Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for December 15, 2021. First up today, the board has requested to approve the following contract awards. IFB 224022, we recommend Neo-Tarik Builders LLC be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $32,604 for residential home restoration and remodel services. This contract will be used by Pinal County Housing. IFB 223024, we recommend that Western Utilities Contractors LLC, DBA Overlies, be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $5,334,999.97 for the Peralta Regional Park Construction Project. This contract will be used by the Open Space and Trails Department. Next, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 150922, first, we recommend approval of Amendment Number 8 to exercise the optional extension period from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, with Fruit Group for Managed Print Services. This is the final extension for this contract, and it is used countywide. RFP 201726, we recommend approval of Amendment Number 2 to exercise the optional extension from January 6, 2022, through January 5, 2023, with Run Beck Election Services. This contract is used by the Elections Department and the Recorder's Office. Next, the board has requested to approve the following change order per Pinal County Procurement Code PC 1502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds. PO Number 246422, with a change amount of $123,652.10 for a new total amount of $318,516.10 with pavement restoration for pavement maintenance materials, and this contract, or this PO is used by Public Works. Lastly, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases. PO 246441, in the amount of $106,695.58 with Shy International Corp. for Hubble Software License renewal, and this is used by the IT Department. And that concludes your Purchasing Division Report for December 15, 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Tara. Any questions on this report? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Purchasing Division Report dated December 15, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Brings us to item number five on the consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So, I have been notified that Supervisor Kavanaugh would like to remove Item A and continue at 215, 2022. So, I take it that it's the December 1 minutes that you are questioning?
I think that's the November 5 minutes. I'm not sure. I had to look at the date.
Oh, November, I'm sorry, November 17?
It's the November?
And the November, and the December 1 is what is listed on Item A.
Would we have to continue all the minutes because they're all on the same item?
Well, I suppose we can craft a, we just, should just do it that way. Is that simpler, Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, you could do it either way. You could, you know, take and pass a motion with an amendment to have one of the minutes, you know, continued to the next meeting if that's what you prefer.
Yeah, that's what, so, so we could craft it to just pass the one that you don't want pulled and continue the one that you do want pulled, the minutes.
Yeah, and let me, let me verify the date. I believe that was November 3. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we had a couple citizens look at the minutes and wanted to correct a couple things.
Okay.
Shall I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
If you would.
So, I would move that we approve the Item A with the exception of the November with the exception of the November 3 minutes, which will be heard at a future meeting.
Okay.
Yes, please, at a date certain?
So for clarity, bookkeeping wise, we pulled Item A. We're doing a separate motion on it right now. We'll go back to the Consent Agenda and ask on the rest, on the balance of the consent items. That, we good with that? Good with that? Okay. So on Item A, I have a motion to accept the minutes of the 17th and the, and the 1st and continue the minutes of November 3rd. Do I have a second?
To January the 5th? We have to state date.
Yeah, continue to January 5th. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Okay. Back to the consent items. Now we have all items from B to Y, through Y. Does anybody want anything else pulled? County Manager, Public? Okay. Seeing none. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes B through Y?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pass consent items B through Y as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. And we will open up the Pinell County Flood Control District Board Meeting. We have consent items A and B. So all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So anybody on the Board want anything called, repulled? County Manager, Public? Seeing none. Can I get a motion for consent items A and B?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. The Flood Control District Board Meeting is closed. And we'll move to the, I believe the Library District is next. So I'll now open the Pinell County Library District Board Meeting for the Directors. All items indicated by a asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anyone want anything pulled from the Consent Agenda of the Library District? From the public?
I don't want anything pulled. I just want to make a statement.
Okay.
I just want to make a.
I will allow it.
Okay. My office is constantly getting probe for and requests for more Cares money. And I just want to let, let them know that this is, there is still funding that will be happening, and we are still looking into it. And just because we are looking into approving something like this does not mean that, that we're not taking care of other first responders, et cetera.
Okay. That's good. Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. I'm gonna close the Library District Board Meeting. And we'll go to Public Health. Looks like. I'll open up the Pinell County Public Health Services District Board Meeting. And Item One is all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled as a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We have A through C. Anybody want anything pulled?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like.
Yes.
Item C pulled.
Item C. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Do I have a motion for A and B?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A and B as presented.
I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Item Number C. Tasha, do you have a question or where we at here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It appeared that a couple of these items, first of all, if we could have a general explanation for the public how we're spending the $6 million, and it appeared that a couple of the items may be repeated purchases, for instance, for the Arc Mapping System and so on. So if we could have an explanation of that, that'd be fantastic.
Okay. Ms. Spears?
Thanks. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members. Tasha Spears, Public Health. In reference to the Enhanced Testing IGA, that's before you, the items in that particular budget were essentially approved for application by the Board, and those involve $5,504,000 specifically for COVID testing, as well as $500,000 for a subcontract with University of Arizona with regard to case classifications and case investigations for COVID. We also do have $273,750 that goes to partial salary supplements for infectious diseases personnel. We have approximately $199,203 that's going to computers and software and supplies for staff members.
Thank you. And it said about the mapping software, I read it was, there was a purchase for mapping software. Did we not, wasn't that covered in another grant or is this a different software?
This actually is covered only in this grant, and it possibly was brought up during the time when we were describing the application for this project. So the GIS mapping software was to be purchased at the end of the year, and that would be with our partner department, the IT Department. So that's what that particular software is for, and it contributes to the development of our dashboard, for the Public Health Dashboard that maps out ZIP codes in school districts and COVID cases in those particular dashboard tabs on our Public Health website.
Okay. And there are six positions that are to be hired and trained by May 1, 2023. Are, do we include in, in the job description and conditions that this is a grant-funded position? It will end when the grant is over, or does the county pick up the tab and those employees continue after that, or do you know?
So those employees are informed at the time of hire that this is a grant-funded position. This is actually a continuation grant, so most of those positions are currently filled, and we're paying a percentage of that employee's salary. So for example, I believe it was the CDIA Communicable Disease Investigator Assistant at 40% and an epidemiologist at a certain percentage.
All right. And then finally, this is a contact tracing, and I was looking on the website just before the meeting. How effective, for the sake of the public's knowledge, is contact tracing, and how does it, how does it occur? And why is this necessary?
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor, Chairman, Supervisor, if I could respond to that, too. So the contract award for the contact tracing is through the U of A, and essentially that is a program that has been established for several years. And when a person has a confirmed positive COVID case, that person is notified and contacted by what's called a COVID Case Investigator, and that person has the opportunity to speak with the contact tracer case investigator with regard to any questions they have, with regard to symptoms and how to resolve those, with regard to continuing health care related to COVID. During that conversation, the person is also asked whether they would want to share the persons that they have been in contact with, close contact with, so that those persons could be notified either by the contact tracer or strongly recommended that the person with COVID please let those individuals know. So contact tracing is essentially a mechanism of trying to limit transmission and spread. And then those persons who may be close contacts of somebody who has COVID are also advised with regard to what the health care recommendations are.
And then this grant provides for sheltering locations?
Chairman, Supervisor, if needed, correct. So this is not a fixed cost grant, so if those particular items are requested by individuals who need them, and if they are utilized, then invoices are submitted to ADHS for those services.
All right. And this question may be too granular, and if you can't answer it, that's fine. But the grant talked about providing mobile COVID testing a minimum of four days per week in various locations. Can you describe the hours and locations, and if we're doing it, or if the contractor's doing that?
So the contractors are fulfilling that deliverable. And essentially, the way that the current procedure works is that we get requests from communities, organizations, agencies with regard to mobile testing sites, and those go to our COVID testing team, and then they facilitate the contact between the city or town, community, organization with the contracted testing unit.
And do you get feedback on how, how the production is going, you know, if it's being, if it's effective? What's the cost per case and so on, or does that not hit your desk?
The feed, Chairman, Supervisor, the feedback that we get is aggregate data. So that is how many people attended a particular event. And then, of course, what the results are with regard to the testing. That's by executive order that gets submitted to ADHS.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Thank you. Board's pleasure on Item C.
Mr. Chair, before we ask that, I mean, if I could just ask, just for clarification.
Sure.
When it, thank you. I know Supervisor Kavanaugh asked about the, the expenses of outside lodging other than in their own home. Could you explain a little bit more in depth of that and what that's all about?
Sure. Chairman, Vice Chair, essentially, there is a portion of money set aside for what is referred to as hoteling. And essentially, what that is, is if there are individuals who have tested positive for COVID and are extremely concerned because they don't, they may have an immunocompromised person living with them in their household, an elder person, or other circumstances where they are requesting some housing during the time of isolation, which is a 10-day period. And so we have some funds available to accommodate those requests. And they would be those kinds of situations where the person, the individual, contacts us with their circumstance and the factors that are affecting them and what the reasons are for their need. So that is essentially the procedure for use of those funds. I can tell you that we have had those funds for some time, and we have not expended those funds.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay. Board's pleasure.
So with that, Supervisor, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item Number C as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
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 Okay. Three, three, two. Thank you. Okay. I will adjourn the Public Health Executive Board Meeting and reconvene the Board of Supervisors' Meeting, where we should be now, on Item Number Nine. Does have a public hearing component to it, so, and it's a decision disapproval of resolution
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Members of the Board, Celeste Garza with Public Works, here to present Item Nine, an extinguishment of an easement on Alseber Road. Alseber's located in Apache Junction. It is south of the mining camp area, north of Superstition. Mr. Pryor would like to install a covered RV in a workshop within this easement, portions of this easement area, but also meeting his required setbacks. And we've notified property owners, and this will not, all of these, we kind of go through at every meeting. No legal access is an issue. Petitioners are in agreement, and all utilities are also in agreement with the abandonment. So the, the area shown in red here is the portion that we are abandoning. There's no current road along this alignment. This is looking north from the Greasewood section. And then we couldn't get to the other side, so this is looking south from Roundup Street. All native vegetation, no existing disturbance for roadway. So I can entertain any questions if you have some.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, let me open up the public hearing at this point. Anybody from the audience? Any comments about this abandonment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item Number Nine as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Brings to Item Number 10, Discussion or Disapproval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Pinell County and Regional Transportation Authority. Jason?
All right. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Jason Bach, and I am with Pinell County Public Works, and I'm here to present Item 10, which is an intergovernmental agreement between Pinell County and the Pinell Regional Transportation Authority. The agreement simply establishes the process for reimbursing Pinell County for costs incurred by the county on behalf of the PRTA. The current total of expenses paid by Pinell County on behalf of the PRTA as of November 30 of this year is $1,726,030.94.
Any questions?
Take any questions.
Hearing none or seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item Number 10 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thanks, have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Item number 11 is discussion approval or disapproval of the Penale County Recorder's Office request to add new position. There she is.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisors, Ms. Kennedy. I am here today to request an at-will elected official assistant position to add additional focus and compliance to election matters in the Recorder's Office. A dedicated position is needed to focus on activities as a result of the increased scrutiny from the public, the legislature, the media, and other federal agencies. The last several legislative sessions have seen over 150 new bills, election-related bills introduced and numerous bills that were signed. We're already hearing this next year, we could get up to 180 election bills. And we've already been sent some that have been prefiled. So all of these have to need a lot of scrutiny and comment from our office. So this position will focus on a continual review of our internal procedures for voter registration, early voting, reporting, public records requests, to include monitoring of the legislation, working with Recorder's Association, Secretary of State's office, and other groups, including the Elections Department, to provide additional confidence, not only to me, but to the voting public, that everybody is doing the same thing, the same way. So this, last year, we opened up two new Recorder's offices. And we've also added a number of new personnel throughout the office. So I do believe that this position is warranted. And approval of this creation of this position will require budget transfer capacity for 30, a little over $38,000 for this fiscal year, '21, '22, plus the advance for the next six months for the next fiscal year of '22, '23. And this is an ongoing position. So I ask that you approve the position as presented. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? I believe this was a, actually, we looked at this position a couple of meetings back. You did a study session, I believe.
I did, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item number 11 as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? I just have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Brings us to item number 12, which is decision or disapproval. Penale County's Clerk of the Superior Court. Whole bunch of names. Rebecca Vidia, are you here? Okay.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Board. My name is Rebecca Vidia. I'm the Clerk of the Superior Court for Penale County. I am seeking approval to create two new job classifications, the Deputy Clerk Trainee Position and the Deputy Clerk Specialist Position, which is also a part of the market analysis adjustments that we have worked on with county human resources. Our Deputy Clerk Trainee Position, this is our entry-level position that we wish to create. This position will perform basic clerical duties and gain those core duties of a deputy clerk. These skills, we hope, are transferable into all departments within my office. The tasks that are performed are designed to retain and, to retain the deputy clerk in the Clerk of the Superior Court's office. After a probation period and one year in this position, the trainee will transition into a deputy clerk position. This will give us greater flexibility within my office to assign the deputy clerk based upon the needs of our departments. This position also creates, is, it also creates a career path within my, my office in the Clerk of the Superior Court. And it'll also help to, without this position, we're just going to continue to experience the turnover that we've, we've, we've had in our office with the deputy clerk position. I'm also seeking the Deputy Clerk Specialist Position. This position requires expert-level knowledge and you must demonstrate skills necessary to deliver all services that the Clerk of the Superior Court provides to our public. This is some of the most complex situations that our clerks deal with. It's under very difficult circumstances. This position requires high-level independent decision-making. It's highly detailed work where accuracy is extremely critical. You, in this position, you serve as, as a mastery of all related processes that are in, that are associated with the Clerk of the Superior Court. You must have knowledge in all filings in our court, all proceedings in our court. And you will, you'll also perform the duties of a deputy clerk and a deputy clerk senior in this role, in this specialist position. This position is severely needed in my customer service department. This department requires a higher level of duties, higher level of responsibilities. And yet, these clerks are compensated the same as a deputy clerk performing our basic clerical duties. The imbalance has created high turnover in this vital department for our office. My clerks in the customer service, these are, they're the front line. And my, the public, they count on them to be there. They count on them for their expertise and their experience. And without this department being fully staffed, our services to the public will be impacted. They'll have longer wait times and delays in the mandated services that I'm required to provide to the public throughout the county. Since this position requires such a higher level of knowledge and experience and they perform such highly detailed work, my hope is that this position is properly classified and the employees that are doing this expert-level work are properly compensated. The approval of the Deputy Clerk Trainee Position and the Deputy Clerk Specialist Position, they're my option for proper alignment in terms of the duties and the tasks that are assigned to each of these positions. I want to create a career path within my office of the Clerk of the Superior Court. My goal with these positions is I want to hire and I want to retain employees and for them to stay in my office and for them to, to grow within my office. So I am seeking approval of the two positions, the Deputy Clerk Trainee Position and the Specialist Position as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the clarification to the public, this is important work. And could you explain to the public why it matters? If, if some, if some detail is missed on a filing? Give us an example of what happens downstream.
So if a person was to come to our customer service counter and a detail is missed, I mean, that can change the whole process of a person's case. It could miss being calendared and not make it to court. A filing can be accepted that legally shouldn't be. A filing can be taken in. And if the clerk doesn't have that knowledge and experience to know, like, hey, this document needs to be seen by a judge today because the law requires it to be. This position is, it takes years of training to gain this knowledge. I actually sat in this position for 17 years in the clerk's office and it took me five years to learn how to work that customer service window. So it is important to know all the processes in the clerk's office and to know the routing of every single filing that you take, every case type that we accept in the court, and all of its subsequent pleadings. Every document, everything we take has a time, time requirement for it. And it's based on statute or rules that tell us this is processed within 10 days. This is processed within one day. This is an emergency pleading. This one, the judge can't see until 30 days. And there are hundreds of different, hundreds of documents that they have to have the knowledge to know what to do when it comes across their window. They also have to have that knowledge of how to handle protective orders, injunctions, emergency legal decision-making. They're in really difficult, you know, dealing with customers that are in really difficult situations. And they know, they need to know how to handle those situations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 12 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay? I just have it.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day. Okay. Brings us to item number 13, is discussion and update regarding Penale County redistricting, represyncing responsibilities with emphasis on the process of making possible changes to the Board of Supervisors' district lines. I just, I know it. I just want to be clear. There's three components to this. If I read it correctly, we have the census thing kind of going on over here by the county attorney's office, if I'm correct. We have the JP thing over here on the side, which is a JP thing in which will, as I understand it, would go to the presiding Superior Court Judge, talk about the redistricting after. All of this, none of this can take place until the IRC is done with their work and delivers to the county their information and how the precincts are going to actually align going forward. And the same for the Board of Supervisors' lines. None of this, and we've set forth a whole bunch of criteria that we use for this redistricting. So just think of it as three different components. And, you know, Councilwoman Smith, I just, I, I kind of, I don't see any public input on this one. I think this is just more of an update on how the process is going and where we are in each one of those stages. Am I correct? Alan?
Chairman Miller, Supervisors, good morning. Alan Quist with the county attorney's office. Chairman Miller, you are correct in the sense that there are some key data points from the IRC. They're maps that the county is currently waiting for.
Correct.
Without those finalized maps, a lot of our discussion today will be theoretical in nature. Theoretical, but becoming real very quickly because those maps are anticipated to come out at the end of December. So if Chairman would like me to go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
If you would.
It's also very difficult to look at on cell phones and desktops. I look at these, what is that? I mean, as it gets closer, hopefully, we've got some detail that we can spread out.
Well, and if I may, we have, we have public input component to this process going forward. And there will be, as I understand it, large maps. And we'll have different venues where we'll, we will ask for public input going forward on all of these, on, on this item. I think the JP thing is kind of a separate deal and really is something that should be brought from the, the JPs and the Superior Court requesting their alignments. And I think that's like the final thing. If they want to change something, they can come to us at the end on that.
Chairman Miller, I do have a section in the presentation regarding the Justice Court precincts. I know that represyncing, represyncing of the justice courts did occur a couple of years back. And there was a process of, of getting the courts involved in that process. The statutes, though, say that the Board of Supervisors can conduct that represyncing.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, do you have any further questions or would you like me to?
But I may, I see Judge, that view in the, in the audience. And I may allow him to speak at some point if he wants to because I'm interested in his, in his thoughts about it as well.
All right. And sort of the, the driving force behind this meeting was at the last regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, a request was made for discussion during today's meeting on the process and the data that the county will be using as it modifies its Board of Supervisor district lines. Tammy Rial is the county's resident authority on all things redistricting-related. And she's spearheading the county's efforts in that regard. She is unavailable today. So myself and Steve Frazier will be presenting. Steve has a lot of the more technical mapping knowledge regarding the redistricting process. He also has some institutional knowledge because he participated last go-around 10 years ago following the release of the decennial census data. I do want to note for the record that the presentation that I have before you today is the final presentation that I provided to the Clerk of the Board, Ms. Kennedy, today. But here is an outline of what we'd like to cover with the Board today. I'd like to briefly review the county's role in redistricting. Next, the status of the county's redistricting efforts to date. And then I'll provide the Board with an update on the census data, where things currently stand with the IRC, the Independent Redistricting Commission. And finally, we'll talk about the process and data used for redrawing the various lines that the county is responsible for. It's important to keep in mind in any discussion regarding redistricting that redistricting is happening right now. It's, it's being implemented on various levels and by various entities. On the state level, you have the IRC, the Independent Redistricting Commission, which right now is in the process of having their final meetings to finalize the legislative and congressional districts that cut throughout the state, including our county, Penale County. Moving down to the county level, our level, the county is responsible for those Board of Supervisor district lines, for the voting precincts, and for the Justice of the Peace precincts, which also line up with the constable precincts. Now, to fulfill its redistricting responsibilities, the county has already taken several preparatory steps moving in that direction, including creating a website that has resources for the public and some good information for the public. We've provided several presentations to the Board of Supervisors. You'll recall Tammy Rial came before the Board three times so far this year. During one of those meetings, the Board, as Mr. Chair noted, adopted several redistricting principles, nine principles. And the Board has also approved the initial voter precincts by the statutory deadline of October 1st. We met in late September, if you recall. And those initial precincts, voter precincts, were adopted. And that's, that's pursuant to statute. Of course, much remains to be done with redistricting. The process, as the Board is likely aware, has been significantly complicated and delayed by the US government's delayed release of the census data. That delay has caused a ripple effect across the redistricting process and all these levels that are working. And it's significantly complicated, the process leading the Arizona Legislature to actually pass some emergency legislation to try to patch up some of the problems and issues that have arisen. The good news is that we now have the census data. The bad news is that we're still waiting for the IRC's finalized legislative and congressional district maps. Those, I've been reading that apparently by the end of the month, December 22nd, we may have those realistically. It probably won't be until January. But, but that's all in the realm of speculation at this point. But as you know, redistricting is an interdependent process. A good visual here is multiple gears moving. And without those legislative and congressional district lines, the county lacks key data points that it needs to intelligently redistrict. So we do need those lines. That being said, looking to the future, when the county does have the IRC's finalized maps, what will be the process? What, what will that look like? What data and methodology will the county use as it addresses these three areas that it has responsibility over? The answers to these questions, as you'll see in the later slides, depends largely on the type of boundary that is being drawn. And first, starting with the Board of Supervisor district lines, the county has And first, starting with the Board of Supervisor district lines, the county has the obligation to review and revise these, these lines by no later than July 1st of next year. The deadline was previously December 1st, or past December 1st. So fortunately and mercifully, the legislature was able to pass SB 1107, which extended that deadline. The relevant statute here, this is important, says that the board shall define the boundaries and limits of each district and make the division equal or with not more than 10% difference in population. This statute enshrines the so-called one person, one vote principle, which comes from a US Supreme Court case, Reynolds v. Sims. This, based on the 2020 census data that we do have, the Board of Supervisor current, current districts, as they are presently constituted, do not fall within the acceptable 10% deviation. And therefore must be adjusted no later than the July 1st deadline. And as, as we'll talk about later, really it has to be done much earlier than that because we're in an election year and there's a lot going on. In the table on the left side of this slide, you'll see there that according to the census, the federal numbers, the total population of Pinal County, there's 425,264 persons. When you take that number and you divide it equally between the five supervisor districts, that comes out to 85,052 people. Now, in an ideal, perfect world, that would be the number of people in each district. That would be a perfect map, if you will. But obviously, redistricting is a very complex process. There's a lot of boundary lines, there's geographic features, there's, there's a lot of data that's involved and that's just not realistic. And so the law allows for that 10% deviation, which really breaks down to about an 8,500 person difference between the largest populated district and the smallest populated district. And as you'll see here, Districts 1 is currently too small from a population perspective and District 2 is currently too large from, from a population perspective. So they're falling outside that 10% deviation. This takes us to the, the process, right? How are these lines changed? Unlike the IRC, which follows a very stringent process, the process is a little more open-ended when it comes to the county modifying its Board of Supervisor district lines. However, whatever process is pursued, should have robust public input and comment. Staff, as you may recall, was previously recommending that we hold two meetings in each of your districts and receive public input. So a total of 10 meetings to receive that public input. And at that point, we'd hopefully have maybe a couple maps that meet the various requirements that are at play, that we could take out, get that comment, and then come back to the Board of Supervisors. Realistically, to meet all of the election deadlines that are coming up, and we've got a, you know, the recorder's got to give notice of precinct changes, there's a lot that has to happen. We probably realistically have to have these public meetings February, March next year and have the board be approving the final lines, most likely no later than April. It should be noted here that some counties have went as far as creating special redistricting committees that meet separately, go out to the constituents, but that is not required. And quite frankly, given the tight timeframes we're dealing with, is not necessarily recommended at this point. When going through the redistricting process, the county will, will be keeping in mind these nine redistricting principles that were adopted by the board on March 24th. And at this point in the presentation, I'd like to turn some time over to Steve Frazier to talk more about some of the, the mapping side of this process.
Sure. Absolutely.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Steve Frazier, Chief Information Officer with IT. It's actually my third census with Pinal County, so my, my work with probably the Board of Supervisor district goes back to even the 2000 census, which was a much more of a manual process, so. But just wanted to go over, you know, our work really, we've done a little upfront work. Basically, the charts you see in there, we can, we now have the 2020 census data. So, essentially running our baselines, you know, what do our districts look now, look like now, population-wise? And, and making sure the tool, tool is working properly. It's a hosted, hosted solution we use for this and have used for a number of years, even going back to the 2010 when we went from three, three supervisor districts to five and then through that process. And it works really, it's a really simple tool, but it's essentially rides on and is connected to, can be used in conjunction with our GIS environment to, to use a, a number of features there and kind of visualizing. So, so really our, our work is, we, we get those congressional legislative district lines and, and yeah, at that point, we're kind of off and running, kind of taking, and I believe Tammy's reached out to, to all of you to kind of get some initial feedback from you guys. We kind of use that and, and start trying to equalize and get to that devia, within the deviation. In other words, at this point, we're using the census data and input we received initially to kind of get a couple of scenarios, if you will. In other words, what, something we could probably start narrowing down to a viable solution to, to get out, then for public comment, so on, so forth. And again, during that time, it sounds pretty easy, the tool does, is essentially looking solely at census blocks and the, and, and the boundaries we, we give it or start with. So, at this point, when we're doing these draft scenarios, we're staying with census blocks, which to give you an idea, there's over 12,800 census blocks in the county. Some of them are kind of random lines. If, when you look at that, it kind of looks like spaghetti on a plate to some degree. So, a, as we start adjusting this, that what the tool does is solely just looking at the census blocks and giving us those calculations on that deviation. So, we, we can make a change and put population from this district into this district and start that, and it's basically calculating that on the fly for us. So that, that's really how that whole process starts to get to some scenarios, again, that are, you know, we find during that process that some scenarios just by the principles and, you know, just won't work for us, because we're, we're using the principles as well as, you know, a kind of institutional knowledge at that point to, to kind of formulate those initial ones. The last bullet there is, once we've kind of gone through that process and we've gone out to public comment, you know, at that point, we've really got one, maybe two scenarios, best-case scenario, that, you know, are really the front runners in this and, and work well for the county and, and the constituents you, you all represent. So, only at that point will we veer from census block lines, if you will. So, so these lines can look a little weird for a while, but essentially at the end, what we'd like to do is, is kind of, the way I put it is kind of smooth some of the edges. Census block lines, some of them can be a little random, you know, kind of go through the middle of a neighborhood or, or on one side of a road where just kind of doesn't make any sense operationally. So, so we can adjust the boundaries very slightly and it's, they're very minor changes. So, any major population within these adjustments, we probably will, probably go back to the census blocks to look at that first. Any minor, any adjustments done in here are really only necessary for kind of clarity of operations and, and, you know, think, think about it from the standpoint of, you know, a constituent saying, oh, am I in your district or your district? And you can say, well, you're on this side of the road, you're in that, you know, so. But for the most part, and I would say, you know, 98% of the time, we are following the actual census block lines with the final product. So, that's kind of how the map modification process goes. Kind of think of, you know, the GIS group, the, the group that's doing a lot of the mapping, we're kind of the pencil that's being guided by, by the input we get in that case. So, any questions on? Sure.
Supervisor Kellam? Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you and I met previously a couple of times on this, we've talked about it. And one of the things that was a concern is, is the board and the public and we don't have confidence in the census data. We said, wait a minute, we didn't, our county didn't reduce in size and cities said we didn't reduce in size. So, is there any way to account for that? And I know you've done work, but for the sake of the public discussion, tell us about that.
Really, and that, that's kind of a, some efforts that have been going on. I, I believe the county attorney came and talked to the board about that as well. And, and my group is actually looking through, we're going through 12,000 census blocks. It's really trying to find that needle in a haystack. In other words, in, in discussions with census, there, there's a challenge, I guess you could say a, a challenge period coming up where we can challenge the count for, for unincorporated Pinal County and the cities can challenge their counts as well. To do that, we've got to kind of come forward with, here's what, here's what we believe happened or here's why we think we're undercounted in this area and provide some kind of proof. The proof is the hard part. How do we know they didn't knock on that door? How do we know, you know, that, that's where it, with Title 13 and how census data is, is, you know, kind of the raw data underneath that they get to see that they, is not passed on to us, it's really hard to find that. So what we're looking for when we're going through that is almost the, the chart you saw earlier. What was the 2010 count? What is it now? Is there, you know, how much growth happened in there in that 10-year period? How much, you know, does that even seem possible that they knocked on every door or everyone within there responded? So, that's the efforts kind of going on at the same time and we're trying to find something to, to grab onto or a trend or something that we see in these.
So where would, where would that data come from? Assessor's office, commercially available data that you would use to compare to the census department data?
Definitely, I pulled information from development services, community development for residential completions. From the time we know, we know we handed them a, there's kind of a line in the sand of what we know we handed them at this point. They did an update from, well, and that point was July of 2018. That was the last data we gave them. Census actually reaches out and I believe uses US Postal Service information to update up to Census Day 2020, which is April 1st. So, and, and we've also got that, that data of what we think was there as well. And then certainly that, that's kind of the point in the sand where we can only challenge the stuff up to Census Day because everything that's happened since April is going on the next census. If that makes sense.
Finally, you mentioned in our meeting anticipating perhaps new builds and populations as a part of calculating supervisor districts. And I know that thought is not fully formed, can you explain a little bit what your thoughts are on that?
Well, and maybe the best way to do it is kind of give you an example. As Alan indicated, if we could get every, every district to 85,052, that seems perfect. We're zeroed out, it's perfect. But we know, and, and since census is only happening every 10 years, if an area is that we know is growing very fast and that we know probably with institutional knowledge from community development and, and just the knowledge we have within the organization, that yes, there's going to be a tremendous amount of growth here, we might want to target that initial deviation a little below that. So, so that when we get five years down the road, we don't have one district just completely outpacing others. And you saw that with District 2, you know, Mr. Goodman's area, it's just been a high area of growth, that back in 2010, yes, it was growing then. Did we know it would keep going like this? Well, we knew it would, but to what level, we didn't know. So, I'm just saying, those are things that can be considered, not necessarily implemented.
And I said, that was my final question, but I have one more. Do you recall in 2010, what the initial deviations were? How close did we get it? We didn't find it.
I, I don't know what we ended up with.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
That was easy.
So, yeah, you see them there.
Okay.
Again, with the, we've got the 2010 data as well, so we can run, you know, comparisons from, from that census and the information we had there to, to what it is now.
Thank you. I have a question and I don't know, Steve, if you can answer it, if Alan can answer it. And I'm just trying to remember what County Attorney Volkmar told us about this challenging of the census was, even if we got them to consider possibly a higher number in some area, either a city or a town or anything, they, they just spread it across everything and it really makes very little change on any one census block. I mean, it's such a, it's so granular, it's just, doesn't have a lot of effect. And I, I don't know if I have that correct, but that's what I remember County Attorney Volkmar telling us. Can, does that sound correct?
Yeah, well, at, at risk of, at risk of, of, of bad memory here, in those conversations with, with Mr. Volkmar, I, you know, that's why the finding has to be somewhat significant to even bring it forward, you know, is, is it worth the, the skin of the game? And my understanding is the official published number that you see there will always be that number, but if they do find something during this challenge, if, if memory serves me, we basically get a letter or some sort of, you know what I mean, in those areas that say, yeah, the population is really probably about this, but the official published number will always be that. That's what.
Will always be that number. It really has, it won't, going forward, this is the number we're playing with.
Yeah, and I'd like to confirm that with, with Mr. Volkmar.
I understand, I understand.
But that was information he got.
And I do too. But that's, that's what I remember about the conversation.
Census couldn't tell us how, because we were like, well, if we do find something big, is this, are you going to republish this number? And I believe the answer was no.
That's what I understood, that's how I remember it as well. Doesn't mean we remember everything, but anyway, okay. That's why, I mean, the census update, and I don't, I don't really have a problem going through the exercise of doing this, but as I remember, Kent said, there's no reason to spend a lot of money on it, because they ain't going to give you anything for it. And it would be more for our ability to do the, the tea leaf reading that we're trying to do with, you know, projecting what we think might be happening in a district.
Right. And, and that's why the, what we're looking for is something significant. And, and just so you know, we've looked through, I don't know how many hundreds already, what ones that we really felt, hey, let's look in this area because we identified it, you know, and census has hard-to-count areas. You might have heard that term during the census. Did they get out there? We, we found what we thought was a hard-to-count area with a population higher than what we expected. And then, you know what I mean? So we're finding it on, on both sides. That's what's hard to find.
Exactly.
You know, we're going to have to stumble across going through 12,000 of these. It takes a while to go through this and kind of look at that.
That's the number we have to work with.
Yeah, and my conversation with Ken is like, we'll, we'll try and get through five or 10% of them by the time we, you know, the, it comes up for a time to do the challenge and, and we'll see what we find.
Right.
And, and on those efforts too, we're going to, it was suggested we reach out to the, to the cities and towns and say, what have you got? Do you have some nifty way? Cities and towns have a little different, well, and, and we've got access to some of that too, but things like active water meters, sewer and trash, things like that, that's the kind of proof that we can get. If, if we see a count that we think is way off and we can get information that says, no, the services were being delivered, the electricity was on and trash was being picked up and water was on at these places, I think that's pretty significant proof.
That helps us, but it don't change that number.
I, I believe so, but let's confirm that with Mr. Volkmar.
I got a couple of nods that look like I'm correct, so.
Okay.
Anyway, and that's, and I mean, this is just what it is.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Frazier? It's time?
Okay.
It's time. I'm good.
At this time? Okay. All right.
And Supervisor Miller, we can certainly reach out to Mr. Volkmar and, and get the clarification that you were asking for.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So, if there's no further questions or comments on the Board of Supervisor district process, I'd like to briefly turn to voter precincts. And I know Tammy Ryle gave a presentation on this, so this will be very brief, but it helps inform the discussion. but it helps inform the discussion that's to follow. Voter precincts, as you're aware, are the smallest building blocks of county elections. There's currently over 100 voter precincts in the county. They're built primarily using voter registration data. So that's a little different than Board of Supervisor Districts, right? As a rule, individual voter precincts shouldn't be split up by other election districts. As far as deadlines go, the county has met that first deadline, that October 1st deadline, has put forth its precincts. But it's important to keep in mind that those will likely be changing again because we have to redistrict and that's going to move a lot of the lines and there's going to be, have to be some fine tuning there. And there's currently some proposed legislation that may help clarify some of the, the issues that counties are running into with, with all these delays. County staff will take the initiative on re-presincting and will present any changes to the Board of Supervisors for your, your approval. Finally, that leads us to the last set of boundary lines that the Board of Supervisors has authority over, and that is the Justice Court Precinct Boundary Lines. Unlike Board of Supervisor Districts and voter precincts, it's important to keep in mind that Justice Court Precincts do, are, are not required to be reviewed and modified in the year following the release of decennial census data. The modifications to Justice Court Precincts are discretionary and can occur at only time, at, at any time, I should say. The exception being that if one of our, our six Justice Court Precincts exceeds 1,200 judicial productivity credits, then the statute says that it shall be adjusted. And judicial productivity credits or JPCs is just a metric that the legislature has created to measure the, the caseload of a justice court. And there can be, you know, discussion and robust debate as to whether it's a good metric, but it is the metric that they have and they assign cases value based on case type credits. So looking at the data, the JPC data that we have for our six justice courts here that is kept by the Arizona Supreme Court, we can see that none of the six courts are even close to the 1,200 threshold that would trigger a mandatory changing of, of precinct lines. The closest would be the Pioneer Justice Court, which is at about 713 there. That being said, Justice of the Peace has approached the county staff and requested that as part of the county's larger redistricting efforts, we also take a look at these Justice Court Precincts and the possibility of running those together with the, the other changes. And specifically, one, one change that was proposed was taking some, some territory from, or some land space from the Apache Junction Justice Court and shifting it into the Pioneer Justice Court. Specifically, this would split voter precincts 89 into two voter precincts, one which would move into Pioneer Justice Court along with the entirety of voter precincts 71 and 76. And that's really obviously hard to visualize, so we have a map here that shows the current boundary lines. On the left there, you see that number six, that would be the Apache Junction Justice Court Precinct to the north. And number one in blue down below it is the Pioneer Justice Court Precinct. And then on the right, you have the proposed changes. The map on the right has the voter precincts overlaid. So you see all those, those numbers spread throughout the, the map there. So it would be 76, 71, and part of voter precinct 89 that would, as proposed, move over to the, the Pioneer Justice Court. And here is a zoomed out map, so you can see all of the, the six Justice Court Precincts. The rationale behind the proposed change is-
Alan, that map was the current map?
Yes.
That's the current.
Chairman Miller.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll make sure.
And the rationale behind the proposed change is that there's been some confusion. We've received reports that the public, law enforcement has been confused by the current boundary lines, that there's been some citations issued directing people to the wrong court. You also have some people in the Santan Valley area that live in relative close proximity to the Pioneer Justice Court. And they're, right now, their, their court is actually up in Apache Junction. So that, that is the rationale. There's some pros and some cons with this proposed modification. The pros, namely that, you know, making this change concurrently with other redistricting changes. If you do that, it can piggyback on some of the other processes that we're following right now with public notice, meetings, et cetera. And that's, that's kind of an economies of scale argument, right? Doing it all together. Some of the cons are that changing the Justice Court Precinct boundaries in the midst of an election year will greatly complicate the process. Staff has been contacted by, you know, some constables are up for reelection in 2022 and they're within their signature gathering time period right now. So they're out gathering signatures. Concerns have been raised, what's the status of those signatures if we start shifting lines in this election year? And, and the law just isn't quite as clear as we'd like it to be. There's some legislative, proposed legislative fixes, but right now they're just proposed. And I was trying to get an update on those and, and I'm not sure what the current status is, whether those are going to grow legs or not. Also, a con would be that this particular change would lead to a, a further imbalance in the JPCs. It would be slight, the Pioneer currently has the highest JPCs. Under this change, it would get more, most likely. So that, that would be something to consider. In some, while this change is, it may certainly be warranted at some point, the timing does appear to be possibly problematic. Had the federal government timely given us the census data, had the IRC timely provided us with their maps, it probably would have made a lot of sense to do all this together. But given the tight timeframes we're, we're dealing with, the ambiguities, ambiguities in the law, this may be a bridge too far to include in this process, especially given the fact that we can revisit, the county can revisit this next year or at a later date.
We, we can change these lines, basically like you said, anytime. And the only time that it's mandated is when the JCPs go over 1,200.
Chairman Miller, that's correct. That being said, I did want to know if the board has any additional, any input or would, would like to consider this further as part of the redistricting process?
Well, and part of the reason we redistricted last time was because we had some courts that were over that 1,200, if I remember right. I think that was part of the issue. It looks like it resolved that issue to some extent. Still have some courts that have pretty low volumes. Mr. Babu or Judge Babu or whatever your title is?
Chairman.
Okay. You are, are you presiding JP?
Associate Presiding currently, so. But Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity. We, we did do this four years ago, pretty extensive process. I, I think the intent was originally for the JPCs. We were never over 1,200 JPCs. In fact, we've never, even the combined courts, even to this day, we've never been over 1,200 JPCs. There may have been other reasons that the county started to undertake that process four years ago. Was not initiated by me in any way or the courts, but that process started. JPCs changed quite a bit. In fact, currently, because I, I track my data every month, we're averaging right now in our current fiscal year, 52 JPCs a month. So we'll, we'll hit about 620 for our court and they change based off of the case filings that we get. That current data, we were at almost 10,000 case filings for our Pioneer Justice Court. This past fiscal year, we were about 90, I think it was 94, 9,500. We're even a little lower right now in terms of our case filings for our court. So I was, I was kind of surprised to hear the Deputy County Attorney in regards to a bridge too far in regards to doing this now. We started, I, I made this ask maybe two and a half years ago because we saw some of the issues that were created by the redistricting that we did. Santan Valley, we're, we're the only community in Penale County that's separated by two justice courts and it's created issues for law enforcement and for individuals that live within our county. Two and a half years ago, I was told, hey, there's a cost of 100-plus thousand dollars to change voter registration cards. Let's wait to the census, right? And then we can do this, this change when we change congressional districts and legislative districts. So we get to this point and it becomes, there's other issues that are involved. And I think the number of case filings and the people that are affected are very small. Our review with the Administrative Office of the Courts, we're talking about 85140. That's the postal ZIP code that we share with Apache Junction and the Pioneer Justice Court. For calendar year 2020, there was a total of 412 case filings that had a defendant whose postal code was 85140. Now, those 412 aren't individuals, right? On a civil or criminal traffic case, you could have two citations, those are two case filings. So we're talking about 300 people that are actually getting cited up to the Apache Junction Justice Court who have, who live in the 85140, right? They're a defendant in a criminal, criminal traffic, civil traffic, or a civil case within the justice court system. Far more are coming to our Pioneer Justice Court. And that may be, maybe some people aren't supposed to. And, and these are some problems that we're having. Law enforcement charges somebody in Pecan Creek, right? And there's a little carve-out Supervisor Goodman, Supervisor Surti, know, know this area because that's an area that they both kind of share within there. But when they cite somebody, right, we, if they book them into the jail, they get IA. We supposed, are supposed to get the IA paperwork and determine whether we're going to release the person or not. Sometimes those people get booked into 1109, which is my court, rather than 1107, which is the Apache Junction Justice Court. But they get the, the charge, we get the IA. The person runs the risk of getting held when they shouldn't or getting released when they shouldn't, right? On those charges. We've had several cases on, say, a driving under the influence case where it's long-form from the county attorney's office, right? So they, they submit the charges case, and this has happened twice. Just within this year, we've set jury trials, set aside two days for the trial, so it's taken off of our calendar. These were charges that were long-form, so it just says within Santan Valley, these are the offenses that have occurred. We only know, find out that it's actually not in our jurisdiction when the county attorney gives us the actual location of where the offense occurred because we do that for voie d'ailleurs. We want to make sure that potential jurors, do you know anything about this case? About this incident that happened at this time? Lo and behold, just before the day of the trial, we have to vacate it and dismiss the case because it didn't happen within our court's jurisdiction. The whole while, jury department's sending out summons for potential jurors to come in to our court. We've set aside those two days. The defendant has spent a year and a half navigating the court process only to have the charge dismissed. So if we're looking at interest of justice, this isn't it when we have issues such as this. The jury department, every time we issue summonses for potential jurors to appear, they have, their system generates these summonses based off of ZIP code. So the 85140, which we share with Apache Junction, every time they send out summonses and we have them do 40 because of, slightly because of this issue, we get 15 to 20% of those summonses aren't within our court's jurisdiction, right? They're from Apache Junction. We don't know that until they come, right? And then we find that information out. So they've taken the day off of work, they've come in and they have to be excused for that process. So there's lots of issues that are happening in terms of this change in jurisdiction. Now, have we lived through it for the past three years? Yes. Should we continue to do that? That's a decision for you. I'll, I'll tell you, Chairman Miller, you, you talked about the presiding judge. He's very supportive of this. Judge Coleman supportive of this. Myself supportive of this. I, I think it makes sense to make these changes and to do it. Whether it's, there's a way to do it that doesn't affect the election process. If there's some delay for the supervisors to change their jurisdiction and it gets us past a time period where it doesn't affect the current election in terms of, for JPs and constables, I'd be all for that. But I'd, I'd hate to continue to go down this road for another two years or, or wherever it is to make what are common sense changes, I think. Any, any questions about?
Well, yeah, just to be clear on what you just said, what you wrapped up with there.
Yeah.
In other words, because if there's, if they're out there getting signatures and then we change the lines, now all of a sudden, maybe I have a sheet of signatures that are no good. What you're saying is, let's get past the election and then change the lines? Are you good with that?
Well, I'm saying if that's, so my, my last conversation with Attorney Quist was there, there is a statute that says signatures are good, if they were good at the time when they were collected, that they're valid, right? Meaning that if, now, somebody can challenge those things, right? Somebody can challenge all, anybody's signatures in court. But the way statute reads is, and I don't have it in front of me, but if the signatures were, at the time that the signature was gathered, if the person was eligible to sign your papers, then it would be valid.
That kind of sticks in my mind as well.
Yeah, so it, well, there's different things in terms of the legislature. I think it was a safe harbor law that said, as they go through this process, whether they collected the signature prior to redistricting or even after, that they would be good from their old jurisdiction to their new jurisdiction. The, the way that I read the statute, of course, I'm not the one giving advice to the candidates, but if they collected it prior to the change, then it should still be good. If it were collected after, well, you shouldn't have been collecting after the, the change had occurred.
Right. I understand that. So. Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Goodman?
I, no questions. It's just that I, I would just like to express my support of doing this, this election period. And I think getting, this needs to be cleaned up. This has been a, a problem that we really didn't foresee. Part of it was, we really didn't know what your caseload was going to be like with, when we did split these up. And so with that being said and looking at what you've got and then with what the Town of Queen Creek is eventually going to be doing, they're going to be opening up their own magistrate, which is going to relieve some of those court cases or whatever. That's going to go to their magistrate within certain areas of Queen Creek boundaries, which they ultimately will be doing here fairly quick. So that may even reduce some of your court cases at that point too.
You're absolutely correct Supervisor. Any of the areas, so they've, Queen Creek's come in, Ironwood Crossings, which is a big component in Cantera. They've, Ironwood from Ocatillo up to where the 202 is going to be, is all Town of Queen Creek. And so they, their PD is going live in January when they do a municipal court. Any of those civil traffic, criminal, misdemeanor, criminal, criminal traffic, instead of coming to currently our justice court, once they have a municipal court, those will all go to their municipal court and none of it will come to, to our court at all.
Yeah. And on those JCPs, what I said earlier, maybe I didn't, I know we didn't go over, but we were bumping up against the 1,200 mark. I believe we had two of them at 1,100 or something like that.
You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, we were close.
We, we were actually, the highest we were was 1,180. So we were 20, 20 shy of that. And, and just for a reference, a reference point in terms of case filings, we don't know what they're going to be in the future. So just for, in 2010, right? That's when I, I took office up in the Apache Junction Justice Court. We had 16,100 case filings. In 2020, between the Pioneer Justice Court and the Apache Junction Justice Court combined, we had 16,500 case filings. So in, in a span of 10 years, all the growth, everything that's happened in our area, there's been a 400 case filing difference. So we don't know in 20 years, you know, what that looks like. There's lots of changes as Supervisor Goodman just referenced as well. There's lots of changes, as Supervisor Goodman just referenced as well.
Well, I think the board's willing to work on this with you, and we'll see if we can't come up with some kind of resolution for everybody.
I appreciate your time.
I'm just, that's what I think. I don't know what these other four think, but anyway, hopefully we can square something up.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judge.
Anything else, Alan?
Chairman Miller, that was all I had. Steve and I had to present.
Yeah, okay. So I have a note on here that you have two maps, Mr. Kavanaugh, or Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman. These are just maps that were created by Mr. Frazier using data from, I said, what would the districts look like absent any other input? So this is more of a demonstration for the public what the computer system does if we have no other input except to have five districts. And you can perhaps show those. Ms. Kennedy? So before we receive the IRC, I think we did this back in February or March or something. I said, what, as we're talking about redistricting, what would it look like if the computer did these without any other input? That's one showing what the computer came up with, simply to minimize deviation with no other considerations.
Yeah. And may I say...
You made it, you could have more.
So the one you just saw there, essentially, the tool has to start with some data point. So you see the little spots on the map there. Those were actually, I think we used the district offices, the main district offices for, as a location to start with. And then ultimately, these are ultimately cleaned up, too, but you kind of get a shotgun effect if you shoot a shotgun at a sheet of paper. And then you have to start cleaning that up because the tool doesn't make it contiguous right out of the gate. You have to start cleaning it up a bit, if you will. So there's been minimal to that, just trying to, but the tool will, every time it does the shotgun effect, simply to get to the deviation. How do I make five separate, you know, areas, not necessarily contiguous, but all of these areas equalize in population? That's really all it's doing. And then started, started moving, getting stuff together from that point. So just wanted to give a point of, you know, clarity on the points you see there. It really does have to start with something typically. What we're looking at now, it starts with our supervisor district lines. So a point or a line. So it has to start with some sort of data point to start those calculations and why we do those baselines to start with. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And that, and then that's where we come to our principles, our redistricting principles that we adopted and start working from that to align those.
Right. And, well, I don't want to speak for Supervisor Kavanaugh, but it was just like, what does the tool do with this? What does the tool do with this input? And that's, that's what we were, were doing for him there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. So it was absent any guidelines? It was a, we were just thinking, how does, how does the computer act and what does the map look like with, with starting with very basic information? So the computer mapping system did that, and it was just a sample to show the public sort of how it works.
Okay. Anything else on that? That it? Okay. Any other questions on the board? Okay. Thank you, staff, for that information. And hope that's, I don't know how clear that is to the public, but I hope you extracted something from all of that. And certainly can reach out to us if you need more understanding. So brings us to item number 14, discussion approval, disapproval of Chairman of the Board for the Penale County Board of Supervisors effective January 1, 2022. No, it's this time of year. So I will open, open up the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board this coming year.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Jeff McClure for Chairman of the Board for 2022.
Okay.
Well, see, I would nominate Mr. Goodman as chair.
Jeff, this is by Kevin. Anything else?
Well, I would have a point of order. Do we have to vote on the first before the second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I believe so. So, and does this require a second? I do? No, just nomination, right? That's what I was thinking. Okay. So first nomination is for Jeff McClure to be appointed to the chair for the 2022 year, 2022, 23, I guess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Three ayes.
If you're it.
Tag. Okay. Well, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So.
That's a good way of bowing out, I think, right?
Okay. And then we'll have, nominations are now open for Vice Chair.
Chairman, if we can take the actual vote for the appointment, that was just a nomination of moving to the actual voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so the nomination was Jeff. Who, who's all in favor of Jeff McClure being the next chairman? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Is that good? Natasha, you good? Okay. Okay, now we'll move to Vice Chair. Nominations are open for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Sertie as Vice Chair.
Have a nomination for Jeff Sertie. Any other nominations? Seeing none? Nominations are closed. All in favor, all in favor of appointing Supervisor Sertie to Vice Chair? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. There we go.
So it's Jeff and Jeff show, is that it?
It's the Jeff and Jeff.
Jeff and Jeff show.
Be confusing.
Mr. Seet?
Yes, you do.
I get it. Okay. Last item of business is future agenda items.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see if it's possible with this, with the new election and everything else of that nature. We, we ran into some problems salary-wise with our constables the last go-around. And I would like to see some kind of a work session or anything of that nature, along with, and I saw Katrina Leav, but some of the numbers that they actually, the work that's done by them and the numbers that's tracked it, and as we discuss what their salaries are going to be for the next, after this next election. Because my understanding is, we're supposed to set that prior to the election, correct? So this is the time to really look at that and evaluate that, correct? So I'd like to do that.
Yeah. Okay. We'll get that on a study session, I'm sure, without a problem. Anybody else? Anything else? Kavanaugh, did you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss setting aside a contingent fee for sheriff's operations if they are in some way called to the border by our governor or other entity or another sheriff's office to cover wages and housing separate from their regular budget. We'd have to examine budget processes and so on.
Separate from the sheriff's office budget.
Separate from their current budget. Another line item.
Okay. Okay. Another line item. That's a good way to put it. Okay. I think we can do that. Anything else? Anybody? None? Thank you. Everybody have a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year. Speedy adjourned.